As promised. As promised. I'm trying to think I had some that I was gonna ask you. I know where you're at.
I got four thirty.
Three seconds. So you're say you're ready, Ms. Kynna? You let me know when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay. All right, how are you? I'm curious what that is. I'm curious the way he. Oh. Filing fees here. I thought maybe she did something like that. Never mind.
Nope.
Nothing like that, I just looked at it. It doesn't tell you anything like that. I think I put two thousand dollars in US. But it doesn't say we did seven filings and people uh two million thirteen dollars. No, we did two filings.
Is there any reason we he couldn't ask for a detail?
I'd love to see the numbers. Look, it's just basically like completing the phone charge. It's all an ask or force a phone charge, isn't that right?
Okay, the meeting will come to order. Uh, for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Opens Meetings Act is posted in the back of this meeting room on the east wall if anybody needs to see that. Uh, we'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Meyer? Ryzik?
Here.
Lou?
Here.
All right, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just wanna remind everyone that again, um, uh, that this meeting is being recorded to be broadcast at a later date. Uh, remember that whoever wants to speak, that you're gonna need to be sure and come forward up to the microphone um, so that you're, uh, you can be heard on the recording. Also, when you come forward, um, uh, when you're recognized, um, you need to state your name for the record so the county clerk gets, um, the information correct. You need to spell your name as well. Um, remember, no swearing or any other inappropriate language. Um, we all need to check our cell phones, try and be sure that you have them off or in silent position. Um, wanna remind the commissioners as well to speak directly into your microphones and loud and clear so that everyone here can hear you um, and that it'll be recorded well for the broadcast later. Um, we'll see how long this meeting goes. Um, we may take a break, um, but it, the agenda, I think, will be fairly short. We'll see what, what happens. Um, the, uh, I think that's primarily it, although I will, um, tell commissioners and others that are here. I believe tonight we'll be doing, um, roll call voting. Um, we, our digital voting is not accessible tonight, so be aware of that. The next item is approval of the agenda and consider any modifications. Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, go ahead and call the roll.
Lou?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
The next item is the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. Um, we do have one scheduled tonight, uh, at the very end of the meeting and, uh, so we will, uh, intend to go into executive session for that. But this also addresses anything else that might come up, um, that we're not aware of, um, uh, at this moment. Um, the next item is the consent agenda. Um, all of the items listed here under the consent agenda are intended to be adopted by one action unless one of the commissioners would like to discuss one separately and ask for one to be pulled out. I would ask.
I would move for approval.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes. Motion's carried. All right, so, um, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is building and zoning. Bill has a couple, um, public hearings tonight, but we're gonna start with the first one, um, which is to discuss and consider approval of a request by Silver Spur Feeders LLC for conditional use permit for a large animal feeding operation located in section thirty-six, township twenty-two north, range fifty-four west. And, uh, this is a public hearing, why don't we officially go ahead and open the public hearing at this point? But Bill will let you, um, give us your presentation.
Sure, so this is a, it's a facility that's been existing for a while. They are not pushing the over one thousand limit, they've just been using it to then hold some cattle while they're waiting for room to open up over their Minotair location. Uh, but the location here, as you can see, it's just north and west of Minotair, off of Kennedy Road twenty-nine there, and it sits right in the center of the section. Really can't even see it honestly unless you're looking for it. Uh, here's the outline of the facility of the plan that was submitted to the DEQ, which is now the DWEE, they changed their name again, so now it's wa- uh, water, energy, and environment. Uh, but this was the, the border that they had approved from them, from the state. Uh, this is what it looks like. I think for all but maybe two months of the year, it sits empty.
Is there a live stream on that or is that just a drainage?
I think that's an irrigation canal that goes through there. Um, Dave's here, he can answer all those questions a little better than me. I'm pretty sure that is a little lateral that runs along there. And, uh, as part of the approval that the planning commission granted, they, they voted six to zero to approve, uh, to recommend approval for this. They, uh, passed along these proposed conditions of approval. We do these on all the conditional use permits that are required. So, uh, the first one here, it's pretty much the standard one, that we always have to comply with all federal, state, local regulations. Uh, we have a subject to receiving the permits as required by the, eh, the DWEE now. And, uh, it, it's not limited to Title one thirty, which is pretty much all of their livestock regulations and the Environmental Protection Act. Um, if the revotes, if those permits are revoked, then we revoke them to, uh, two. This is for a maximum of up to twenty-five hundred head, that is what they've okayed so far. If they would wanna have more and have an expansion, they'd have to come back to the board. The board would have to go through this again. Three's just spillage, power failure, storms, there's plans, it's all included in that project plan that I gave you guys, I sent out last week. It's very standard effect, the outfit that does this, they've done almost all of them around here. So, when you look at one, you've probably seen ten of them, they're almost all the same language on it. Four, just the same thing, you're going with the dead animals being disposed of by the state and federal regulations. Any test results, uh, should be made available to my office, which they could be public. Closure plan, it's also once again in that project plan. And seven, uh, basically, if they sell it, the conditional use permit goes with the land. So if they were to sell it, they don't have to come back in and get a new permit, it just goes to their successors. But once again, the planning commission did recommend approval by a six to zero vote.
Was there anybody there in opposition?
There was three people at the meeting and they were both representatives of the applicants. That was it.
All right. So again, I'll, um, remind everyone that this is a public hearing. I'd ask, is there anyone here, uh, to speak on this item this evening?
So I'm Dave Kucera, uh, D-A-V-E-K-U-C-E-R-A. I'm a regional manager with Seti Agro Service and Engineering based out of Raymond, Nebraska, and we are actually the consultant for Silver Spur Feeders for all their locations. Um, the main reason that this conditional use application came up is the state, um, the NDWEE um, recently renewed the old permits for the feed yard for the twenty-five hundred head. And upon that renewal, um, the county and, um, like senators, they are all notified of that and that was what triggered Bill to be like, hey, there is no conditional use application, um, for this facility on file with the county. So we submitted the application to become in compliant with the county as well as to match the head count between the county and the state level. Um, the permits, um, you know, like as, um, shown here, like in the conditions, um, all of these conditions have been met. The permit is in hand with the, from the DWEE. Um, the twenty-five hundred head, which we're here in front of to get your approval on, is for twenty-five hundred, which matches the state permit. Any waste, spillage, or discharge, all of that is documented in, um, the supporting information that was requested by Bill as well as the mortality, um, what's gonna be, like how the deads or the mortalities will be handled with, um, water wells to test results to be submitted in, um, a closure plan, and that, that is all included in the facility's nutrient management plan, which is specific to, um, to this facility. Um, to answer Mr. Reisig's question that he had when Bill was speaking, um, there is, um, an irrigation lateral that is on the south side of the drainage basin or of the drainage area. Bill, can you go back to that site plan?
Can I just use the arrows if you need to move it?
Okay. Yep, so obviously with this here being the overall site facility, the lateral is there on the south side, which is flowing east to west. Um, the dark area that you see there on your screen is actually, um, the wet basin, which is permitted by the DEE, so any runoff from any of the pens and within that drainage area, which is the outline, like you can see the, like there's a pink line with little arrows kinda pointing in, starting on the east side, comes up and then it comes west and then north, all the way up around that barn, and then comes back south and then angles back across to the west. So that's the entire drainage area and that whole drainage area goes to the basin, which is represented here as the, like that dark.
Are you setting a thousand head right now?
Um, I believe right now, there are a thousand heads.
That's where it is. So, when you do that, how much does that basin increase in size for volume?
So, as part of the state regulation, um, that basin is designed at the twenty-five hundred head because that's where the state permit is at. So that basin is designed to handle the twenty-four hour, twenty-five year rain event, which in this area is about three inches. So three inches of rain in one time where all of that water will go there to then be agronomically land-applied to fields within the nutrient management.
It'll go through a pivot?
Uh, pivot or flood irrigation.
Flood, either one, okay.
Yep, they can go through either.
So you're, you're gonna lift it though, you will build a gravity out of that?
Correct, it would be lifted, pushed over.
Okay.
To get through, to be land-applied, correct.
Did you say that lateral flows east to west?
Sorry, west to east, I believe I did say east to west.
Yeah, and I thought, eh.
Yep.
Don't seem right.
It would if it was up high.
Yeah.
It's mountain water.
Yeah.
Maybe it goes the wrong way.
So, with this basin as part of the permit, um, the facility actually has to manage the amount of water in that basin to what the s- the DWEE is, has three critical levels. So one is, which is, uh, max water. The second level is start pump and the third level is pre-winter. So, the pre-winter level must be attained by November fifteenth. Um, and I cannot remember right off the top of my head what that level is, but I can get that for you if you do need. Uh, but then the start pump level, so throughout the growing season, whenever the water is at or above that start pump level, the facility must, um, actively be applying that to a growing crop or land applying that field out to regain that capacity. And then the max water level is the most water that the state's gonna allow in that facility or like in that structure. But there is actually another foot and a half of storage capac- capacity in that structure before that structure were to actually overtop and discharge.
Where does the discharge go? It isn't gonna wind up in that lateral, right?
Potentially, it could, yes. But that is what the, um, MPDS permit.
Well.
Through the state and the federal.
This berm they have designed, is this gonna increase that berm size which you have in this proposed permit?
This is already how it is built to handle the twenty-five hundred.
That's what I wonder if there's anything proposed, increase that berm size.
Nope, there is no proposed construction or increase of head count.
So, are you, are you gonna, everything's gonna set to the east of the existing corrals now? The new, 'cause there's no, I don't see a proposed design here on anything.
Yeah, there is no proposed construction.
No, no additional corrals.
No additional corrals, no.
You can hold, you can hold twenty-five hundred head in those corrals you have now?
We do not believe we can hold twenty-five hundred head.
But you're gonna permit for twenty-five?
But we are get, we are requesting a permit for twenty-five hundred head to match the state permit.
Okay, so which way, if you chose to increase, are you gonna go to the east, west? Which way are you gonna plan to, for expansion?
There, we are not planning any expansion at this time, 'cause if we were, if we pla- if we want to expand, we will have to come back in front of the board for approval to expand.
What is the length of time that they would be there before they remove to the big facility? Nor- normally, how long are they there?
It's probably four months.
Any other questions for Dave while he's up here? All right, thanks Dave.
Thank you, board.
So, anyone else here this evening to speak on this public hearing? Okay. So I don't see anyone else, um, so I think we can officially close the public hearing. We'll go to any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
I would move for approval.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for approval of the, um, uh, application. Any other questions? Hearing none, you can call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
All right, motion's carried. And, um, so we appreciate you guys being here tonight on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, the next one is a public hearing as well to discuss and consider approval of a request by Irma Castaneda for zoning change ag to rural residential and preliminary plat of the Castaneda subdivision located in section nineteen, township twenty-two north, range fifty-five west. Um, this is a public hearing, but Bill, we're gonna let you go ahead and, um, tell us about this.
Sure, so here is the Riverview Golf Course and here's Highway ninety-two. Uh, the drive comes in here off of the, it's right next to the railroad tracks. It's Ingleman Lane. So she currently owns this eight point seven six right here. Now she just wants to go in and cut it in two pieces, have a three point oh four acre up here, up on the top, keeping the rest of it as a five point seven two down below. Looks like this on the plat. And she just wants to, like, give it to her brother. So, uh, it does, it's, the top one's, like I said, three point oh four, the minimum acre, just three acres on that and obviously the five point seven two meets it. They have access right here off the Ingleman Lane.
What's, is that Ingleman, that's where is Ingleman Road?
Yeah, Tom used to live up there, yep, yep, that same place.
Okay.
There's a little closer view.
As long as we have good access, that's all right.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, this is the access that goes back in, there's a couple more houses up the top here. So, uh.
That's Hagum's old place, isn't it?
Uh, his actually comes off of River Road.
That's Ingleman.
Yeah, this was Tom's here, yep, exactly. And then I, oh, Hunter Cosman has a place just right up here, kinda dead ends into his yards.
Ramsey used to own that originally, I believe, right off the road, didn't he?
Uh, you, you might be right, it could've been.
I think that was Jay Ramsey's property.
I know, I just know Tom lived in this place and he, I think he farmed almost all this over here, so, um. Anyway, there's, the house stays on the existing tract, this'll just be the empty one that she wants to give to the brother. Once again, it meets all the requirements of zoning regulations. The county or the, it's Gaslo County Planning Commission did recommend approval by a six to zero vote on that also.
So Bill, this does meet the size requirements and things like that?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, three, that's, three acres is the minimum when we get into the rural residential, so they put that one just above, just so they could get their three, yeah.
All right. Um, any other questions before we let Bill sit down for a little bit?
Do we have, are we in a public hearing right now?
Yep, so we gotta ask everybody else, so. All right, we'll let you sit down for now. So again, this is a public hearing, I'd ask if anyone is here, um, to speak on this item? Let the record show there were none. Um, so commissioners, do we have any other questions for Bill or any other questions in general?
Well, I move that we approve it.
Yes, come out of the public hearing first.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, we'll officially close the public hearing.
Well, make my motion again, I move to approve the request by Irma Castaneda for a zoning change.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Lou?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
And then, uh, Bill, we're gonna need then a separate motion to dis- it says discuss and consider chairman's signature on the final plat for the Castaneda subdivision, is that correct?
Right, so you just approved the preliminary plat for it, now I just need your signature on the final plat so I can get it recorded.
I would move for approval of the chairman's signature.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
All right, motion's carried.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate you getting that to us early like you did and we were able to review things and I appreciate that.
Here's all the stuff I need you to sign up for.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion to move into Board of Equalization.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to move into Board of Equalization. Um, call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
Um, so the first item is to receive the tax list correction. I believe that was included in our packet. Is anyone here to speak on that stuff tonight? Doesn't look like it, just one it looks like. Um, any other discussion from commissioners?
I'd move for approval.
Second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the tax list corrections. Any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
Uh, the next item under Board of Equalization is discuss and consider resolution for certification of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six tax levies. Um, Kynna, you're gonna cover this.
Yeah, um, so we did receive all of the, um, budgets that we needed to set the final levies for twenty-five, twenty-six. I do have them all up here if anyone wants to take a look at any of the individual budgets. Um, but included in your packets, um, you should have the, um, final levies so that you can see kind of where everyone's at in the tax revenue that that levy will generate.
So, obviously we received these in our packets earlier. Um, are there any questions, uh, from anyone, I guess, as far as that goes? And, uh, particularly commissioners, any questions?
I'd move for, move on.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this, which I believe is the resolution for certifi- certification of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six tax levies. Hearing no other discussion, I can call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Move we come out of Board of Equalization.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to come out of Board of Equalization. You can call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes. All right, next item, uh, general agenda items is to nominate and appoint vice chairman of the board. So of course, uh, with Mr. Knapper gone, then he was the vice chairman.
Thank you.
Do I nominate, uh, Russ Ryzik to be vice chair of the board?
I would second that. Any discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second for Russ Ryzik to be the vice chairman of the board. And hearing no other discussion, call the roll.
Lou?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ryzik?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, motion's carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is to receive inventories from management accountant uh, and human resources and tourism. Those again are posted on the website, I believe, that, uh, on the county website.
Um, and they are available in our office, they're just not part of your packet since they're so big usually, so.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to accept the management account, human resources, and tourism board, uh, inventories.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, are there any, uh, anyone wanna discuss any of that? Okay, hearing none, um, why have you called the roll?
Ryzik?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes. Okay, for those of you that have the eight and a half by eleven page, yeah, turn the page to the, uh, old business on the back. Um, so the old business, the first one is time clock plus and payroll processes. Uh, Lisa, any updates?
We had an officials' meeting last week. Our next step is, we've asked them all to turn in their time sheets that they print out for their employees. What we need is verification of what's in time clock plus agrees to what they put on their Excel spreadsheet that's turned into the payroll coordinator. If they don't agree, then the integration will not be successful or it won't be the same as what they're expecting. So we are asking for some further proof that we have this information accurate, so. And this is with all the departments, with the exception of our unions, detention center, comm center, sheriff, there's still work to be done with all of them. But all our other departments were ready to move, move forward, but we wanna have this, this analytical piece where we can analyze the information that's being added to the spreadsheets that come to. This analytical piece where we can analyze the information that's being added to the spreadsheets that come to payroll.
Other one accepting all the changes.
It's going okay.
Good.
We're doing okay. Moving forward, they work, like Charlotte has worked very hard with and she. Now I get to tell her, well, add that to your list on your next phone call to TCP, so we can get these things cleaned up. So that's been very helpful.
That's coming along and you are getting those things to work and thing up.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Sounds like we're making more.
We're making progress.
Serious progress.
Yeah, that's good. That's what we're after.
So do you feel that once we get all of those issues ironed out, are we still going to be able to, um, incorporate? The union contract things into our, the payroll? I know that those are more complicated and how they're paid and things like that.
Concerns, but I think we can, I mean, this is a pretty powerful tool we, with TCP product that.
Right.
Most things should be able to be dealt with. So I'm gonna, I'm thinking optimistically it can work. So we can skip all this rework of putting together information. Once again, for Charlotte to input, it should just go from this application, zoop, to this application and.
Right. So that's the.
Well, that's what we're hoping to do with the, the, the non-tech, non-complicated departments first and then work the others.
So you just walk them in step by step?
And so there's probably three contracts, uh, union contracts or four. That you'll want, need to start working into place and probably maybe one at a time and.
Yes.
I think we can also be thinking about that, um. If, if those contracts are put, are written in a way that causes us major headache. Maybe they can be rewritten a little bit, accomplishing the same thing, but something that will work better with our software program.
One would think, one would think, so.
On the next, right, the next time we.
I will see what it is. Nothing should be too unpermittable.
But we'll get the other ones taken care of first and then start focusing on those, is what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
It's, it's a diff- uh, it'll, it's where we should be. And then hopefully, we can get our updated payroll program, and it should be a lot smoother, so.
Okay. Um, any other discussion or comments about time clock plus payroll?
Well, I just thank you for, and gals getting that put together, that's, that's a big deal.
Mm-hmm. It's taken years.
Taken a long time.
Alright, appreciate that. Alright, we'll go to the next item, which is the USDA Wildlife Services Program. And, um, who wants to give the update there? The, uh, well, I'll mention what I thought I heard. So, um, the USDA, uh, person, I don't remember his name. Um, was at the recent NACO regional, um, meeting in Bridgeport. And, um, I don't know, I suspect that there were probably twenty county commissioners there. And, um, representing most of the counties of the panhandle, I think. And, um, he gave a, a big overview actually of what they do and then. Kinda narrowed it down to some of the things that are dealt with on the county level locally. And gave us copies again of the state statutes that deal with, um, things that we deal with. And they end up dealing with, um, and, uh. Uh, one of the, um, hopes out of this was that we may possibly get the. Some counties to work together to help provide enough funding to provide part of the funds. For a full-time person. I think he would, he said that there, they didn't have anyone available to hire right away. They, like most others, um, organizations are having trouble hiring people. Um, to, um, uh, that are qualified and to work in those positions. Um, but he's still hoping that possibly we would, um, help, um, come together. To have a group of counties that would help pay for a person or partially pay for a person. But the, the whole gist of the whole story, um, from him and then from us as well. Is, um, to try and get the state to go back and provide the funding. Um, that they used to provide for that position. And the, the state has eliminated their, um, uh. Their funding, basically. And so, um, part of the story was for us to contact our state senators. That would, uh, would be represented there, um, and, uh, with our counties and the panhandle. Some of the panhandle counties, I think it was Sheridan County and one other one. That have kinda written some, uh, programs on their own. And, um, have been enforcing, uh, most, ninety percent of what's being dealt with. Is prairie dogs and, um, so, um, there's, they have some. Rules in place in Sheridan County, um, where, um, the landowner has to take care of. Their own prairie dog, um, situation. And, um, uh, it was noted, uh, Mr. Steve, that, were you there at that meeting in Bridgeport?
Yes, I was, but I wasn't there.
Not on this part, but, you know, most of them were saying that they're, the, um, wildlife things were handled. Through the weeds department. And so, um, that was something that Russ and I kinda turned and looked at each other when, when that was said. That's, hey, this, that's a little interesting because we, we've always said, this really never fell under any particular. Department, um, uh, in our overall, um. Structure here and, um, but most of the counties were dealing with it through their weed department. Because a lot of the same things, you know, it's neighbors complaining about neighbors, um, whether it be weeds or prairie dogs. Or some other kind of nuisance and, um, uh, they just said, you know. They deal with the same processes and the same issues and, um.
There's weeds, right.
So most of them were telling us that their weed department has, has been involved with that. So I suspect that that might come up on our thought process at some point in time. What's that?
Sheridan.
Sheridan specifically, um, but there were some others, uh.
Well, there Garden County too.
Yeah, maybe Garden County.
Lincoln County has their weed predator control person the same.
Do they? So I think according to some of them there, that several counties do that, maybe even others in the panhandle.
And I think with Sheridan County, they actually set up a predator board in their county to help organize that.
Right. And then they have, they have some authority although, um. If, uh, if they had given notice, um, to take care of their prairie dogs and they didn't do it. Um, I believe the county would go out and do it. Um, but, and then they would try and collect for it. But quite honestly, I think they said that they could put a, possibly a lien on their property. But it wouldn't get paid until the property got sold. They didn't, they didn't foreclose on that or anything.
Were they receiving any federal money for doing that or was it all on the county?
Um, I think it was all on the county when they did that.
Cause our, our county's, that we just always gave money to the federal government to take care of. But still, same thing, those people have to hire, that government, a trapper, he's gotta come in. And the rest, uh, the landowners still gotta pay him to come in and do it, so.
I think the, you know, again, we glanced there at the state statute, but it's still saying that. We, we technically could be held up, held responsible up to a thousand dollars per, um, incident. And, um, that's what we were trying to avoid before.
But I think that's our cheapest way to handle it.
And it, you know, thinking of the fact that I'm not sure we've had any, um, incidents that. Had the, um, county involved, it may be, yeah.
File a claim since I've been on the board.
Right, most, um, landowners realize that they need to pay for their own. And then some of them choose just not to do it at all.
Years ago, there were a couple of them that filed a claim with the county.
Did get the thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it's been. Quite a while ago.
Yeah, must've been, but I think that's really the fairest way to do it. If there's a, you know, uh, infestation, I think we ought to help with that. Rather than, you know, paying, or otherwise we're paying twelve or thirteen thousand a year and we're basically getting nothing for it.
At this point, I'm not sure that it's, uh. That's, that's not the issue that we left Mr. Lees in charge of, was it?
No, we left him in charge of the, uh, juvenile detention.
Oh, yeah. So, anyway, so I'm not sure that it's really going anywhere until the state helps participate in the funding. Because I don't think that the, the five counties that were participating before. Aren't providing nearly enough funds to make up for what the state has taken away. And the federal government's not providing any towards that either, so.
I don't think it's, it's gonna ever come of it.
Right, I don't think that you'll foresee us back into the same contract situation again. Um, anytime soon unless something changes. So, that's, that was the update that we had. I was glad he was there. A lot of the counties heard some things, I think. That they hadn't heard before, um, because he was just here recently. Most of it was repetitive for us, but it was good to hear it. And, um, so, anyway, he was there and I appreciated that.
You wanna speak on what, we talked with, uh, on lease as well?
Uh, well, not under this item. Maybe down here under board and staff reports, maybe. Um, anything else under the Wildlife Services Program?
So you have, just a minute, have you heard any of the other, uh, superintendents or, or, uh? Weed superintendents dealing with any of the pest control?
No, not a lot of them mentioned anything about it, I mean, so, um, I can certainly hit those stuff up and.
You might ask at the next meeting that you have, because I, I suspect it's gonna come up here one of these days. Alright. Okay, so I think that concludes our old business. We'll go on to the next item, which is public comments. The Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting. Or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action on comments presented this date. So I'd ask, is there anyone from the public that's here to comment on any particular item?
Mitch Wagers, M I T C H W A G E R S. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Uh, I do wanna, uh, mention, I appreciate you talking about the prairie dog ordeal. Uh, I hear a lot about that in my business and, uh, it would be great if, although while people enjoy taking care of prairie dogs. It would be great if there was a less of a problem of prairie dogs, but I'm not sure what the solution is there, but I do appreciate the.
You know, what we did hear was that not everybody feels the same about prairie dogs.
I, yes, true.
People are, are not happy if we're out shooting them or doing other, using whatever.
But, yeah.
I know, but, but when you mentioned your business, I, I knew that it was related and we all know that it's related as well. Um, and then there's several other ways that, um, they deal with prairie dogs. But, um, uh, not all of them are ways that certain neighbors are happy with. And, um, so, um, we, um, we heard that, you know, there's some on each side of that. And that's where, uh, it, you know, if, if most of the neighbors and, you know, we're normally talking about ranching people. That have the problems out in their ranches and their grasslands. Um, and most neighbors are all in favor of trying to control damage to their properties. And, um, but every once in a while, somebody isn't and, um, then that's where these things get dealt with. And, um, some of the discussion that was had, I said, I know several people that'd be willing to come out and try and help a little bit.
Yeah, I, I just wanna mention that I don't think there's a, there's no ideal solution. It's just, you know, it, it is what it is. I'm not sure. I don't, haven't partaken in handling of prairie dogs, but, uh, I hear it's a, a major issue and it just doesn't go away. So I just wanted to appreciate that, that you brought it up and talked about it. Um, the second thing I have is I am going to object to the executive session, uh, at the end of the agenda, so.
We'll let, um, uh, Mr. Ocean address that when we get to it and, um, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, anyone else under public comments? Alright, not hearing any others, we'll move on to the next item, which is board and staff reports. We normally go around the room, maybe we can start on this side. Ms. Lisa, do you have anything you wanna talk about?
I just was gonna comment that I left your budget books at your, at your desk.
Right.
There's a stack of papers within them. I think that's, you might've had some notes from previous books, if you want them. Great, if not, if you want me to take them away and put them in shred, I can do that too.
They're fine.
Alright.
I need to look at them, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Some of them may, most of them may be able to be shredded.
Get rid of some paper, huh?
Right.
Absolutely. And I did get moved to my new office. I moved Russ.
Did you?
I did.
Cool.
So.
Well, good for you. How's it feel?
Great.
You like it?
I like it.
Good.
So that basically means that, um, Lisa's office, Kim Lang's office and, um.
And Charlotte's.
Charlotte's o- um, office for payroll is all moved down here, uh, down the hallway here, the main hallway. And, um, the, uh, they're no longer in this office back here.
I still have stuff back there, but yes, for the most part, all, everything's gone.
Okay.
I left the table, so you can have your, your session back there.
Sure, okay.
That's all I have.
Alright, Jason, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, back there in the corner, Kurt?
Just a quick update, a couple of quick updates on our software, starting our third week of the new software. Had to change some pol- policies a little bit, so you might get some calls. Um, but the new software, the way it batches scheduling, um, we're now requiring everyone have their trips called in by three P M. The day prior. Including Fridays for Monday trips. Uh, we're just not able to accommodate the number of trips we've been doing if we keep adding late trips. Um, especially given that we don't know if we're gonna get our funding back. I still don't have an update on that. So if you get any calls, I put out, um, some feeds on our Facebook page and try to get word out to the public in different, different, um. Agencies that we do have to have those in by three. It, it basically batches all pre-scheduled trips. And then anybody that has a will call trip, you know, to return from a doctor's appointment or whatever, then we just weave those in as the day allows. But, uh, it just does not allow, uh, the notification system is up and running, so they're getting notifications in advance the night before. They're getting a notification when the bus is on its way and when it arrives, so we're hoping that helps with a lot of the no-shows. Cancels at the door, things like that. And we're still working on the, the, uh, mobile apps that we should hopefully have in place within about a month to two. Uh, which will hopefully continue to increase our efficiencies. Um, did get our four new buses outfitted and they're out on the road now, uh, hoping with more, well, don't even mean parking, that's still an issue. But, um, we're not running them twelve hours a day, so we're hoping that will help with some of the maintenance issues and stretch things out, increase the lifespan of those vehicles a little bit. Um, we're doing an A M. Um, we're doing an A M. shift with the new buses, eight hours, and the P M. shift is running older buses at four hours. And uh, we're like, except we're hoping that'll help spread out the wear and tear on them a little bit instead of hot seating them and running them twelve hours. Um, and again, with the, uh, space is still an issue, office space and parking space and uh, I haven't heard anything from the state yet as far as any of that funding, uh, carrying over from last fiscal year, I, I'll give you an update as soon as I hear anything, which could affect our operating hours and potential shutdown, so, keep you posted.
Kurt?
Go ahead.
How many routes are we running right now currently?
There's two, two fixed routes, blue and orange, so there's four buses, there's always two, one of each route, northbound, one southbound, twelve hours. Um, and then our demand response runs um, seven to four. When we started the routes, we were running four, we've, we're now up to six to keep up with the demand for trips, even with as many efficiencies where uh, ride sharing as much as possible, this new software is grouping trips. We're negotiating some pickup times with folks, maybe they're coming from Mitchell or Morrel and they're a half hour apart, we're working on negotiating so we can just send one bus. Um, but again, last year we had twenty percent year-over-year growth, we added forty, over forty-five thousand trips last year.
So how many buses were running on these two ru- routes at any given time?
There's four out.
There's four.
Two and two.
Two on the blue and two on the orange.
Okay, well, this morning I was coming into town and I got, I passed one of our buses coming into town. And I was looking ahead and we have, I'm in between two of our buses, one following the other. Isn't there anything that, that one bus would wait so many minutes before he gets behind another bus?
We could potentially stagger our headway times, half hour.
Well, I don't know.
The issue that is, when you're trying to do a transfer, that person's sitting and waiting for thirty-five to forty minutes, if they're transferring. Orange route stays east, blue route stays west, but they both hit high activity centers to avoid a bunch of transfers, especially if you have a person in a wheelchair. Um, it, a transfer doesn't make sense, um.
Well, it looked like they must have just left Walmart because.
Mm-hmm, and they do, and then they'll go down Twenty-seventh and then they split. Uh, right at the mall, they basically split and one goes east, one goes west, then they kind of re- rejoin up at um, Co-op Safeway and the Y. where they'll do transfers if necessary, and again, that, we tried to avoid a ton of transfers just because it's less efficient. And then again, the orange bus goes to east, the east side of gearing, the blue bus goes up to the west side. Both, the routes were designed to hit those high activity centers on both routes, so we don't have as many transfers and it's more efficient. It does seem redundant at times, but um.
You know, it's a perception, I think, when people see two buses, one behind the other.
Yep, uh, and like I said, it was designed by people way smarter than me, we have tweaked it a little bit and I'm always open to ideas, we had, I have some ideas planned, if we get our funding back from, and that'll probably be next fiscal year. Um, but every time we do that, we have to change all of our literature, we have to go in and do, do a bunch of software changes. Um, and uh, and do some public outreach, do some things on our website, um, run time trials, just, there's, there's a lot of logistics involved in making changes and I'm not against it, but when we do it, I try to do it, do them all together, as many together at one time to lump the cost in on one shot, because it is between new route brochures, updating software, updating our website, all that, um, moving bus stop signs, um, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to do that.
So, where I see some of that, where they're backed up, back-to-back, um, hospital.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then Walmart, um, those high activity areas where a lot of people wanna go from both the orange route and the blue route.
Yes, sir.
And then on top of that, if you have someone that is a, what do we call them, designated or a, what's the other route?
Demand response.
Yeah.
So you'll run into four buses at the hospital sometimes.
Some of those could be going to the same place.
Coming in from Mitchell and Morrel and.
Right, and then, yeah, and quite honestly, to the public, it looks like it's redundant and it, um, they don't really realize how the routes are set up and some things like that. Um, but it does look redundant, it does look a little bit excessive, but, um.
I'm always open for ideas, the other thing we do is I, since I've taken over, we've, um, every vehicle we run, with the rare exception of one twelve passenger, we occasionally have to put in service, um, is wheelchair accessible. Otherwise, we have to provide, um, what's called a complimentary paratransit for anybody who's not able to access a, a non-A D A. vehicle. And by keeping all those out there, we don't have to have that additional headache, honestly, of this person calls in and they can't access it, we have to do something scrambled, to do something different to accommodate them, whereas every vehicle we have. And the state is working on a, uh, an R F P. for a new, that's a Ran Pro Master van with a ramp that hopefully uh, will give us another option for our demand response. The minivans are nice, but they're three, capacity of three, when you put a wheelchair on there and the backseat is very small in those, so you can get maybe three. So as we go forward, uh, obviously they work at the pace of government, so I'm hoping they have that as an option in the next year. But I already have a request in for another four transit, another minivan that the state doesn't know if they're gonna have funding to even get those this year. So we're, we're putting Band-Aids on everything, we just put a new engine in a bus, um, eleven thousand dollars, so.
I've also, I've also heard, you guys must really be busy, I saw three buses at Walmart.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going, yeah, yeah, they're busy.
We, we are, and.
I, I don't know whether there was one or two people on each bus, but it doesn't matter.
We are still.
Cause we're talking about public perception.
We're about fifty, fifty, fifty percent, uh, when you, when you look at the number of trips for our, our demand response, which is outside the route and the rest of the county. And um, then on the routes, it's about fifty percent of a ridership on each service. Routes do run longer, uh, with this new software, uh, the new apps, it's gonna make the routes more user-friendly, people can not have to wait at a bus stop or route in the cold, it'll tell them how far away their bus is, it'll give them real, real E T. A. Uh, real-time E T. A. at that bus stop, so they can wait inside the store till that bus is approaching and go out. We're, the, the technology, I think, is really gonna help, uh, obviously, it's a, it's a hope, but we're trying to get the word out, uh, to get that out and, and make it more user-friendly.
So I have one thought for you, so I, I think Lisa's talked to you about um, possibly um, uh, helping with the state of the valley.
Yes, sir.
Um, and uh, you know, there's a meeting tomorrow. And um, yeah, we're, uh, assuming you're gonna be able to attend that.
Mm-hmm, I'll be there.
And I don't know how extensive that some of this may be, um, they're just kind of putting that whole program together. So it may be minimal, it may be, I don't know what it'll be, but we'll find out more tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll be there and I appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir, I'll be there.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright. Um, Troy? Alright. Um, other staff, Steve?
A few things, Kurt brought up software, um, our software, we're having problems with it, the uh, I guess the owner of the company has passed on and that the uh, there's no, I guess, service for the software anymore, it's called R and B. Road and Bridge. That's where we enter all of our cost accounting and, and that sort of thing, our equipment costs into this to keep track of all of our costs. So we currently are looking for some different software, we've done a few different Zoom meetings, different ones to see what they uh, can offer us to help replace this, so, um, that's where that is at. Um, Forty-second Street started last week, they milled it, didn't do anything, of course, today, so hopefully by the end of week, it'll be uh, asphalted and striped and we'll do a little shoulder work on it. Excuse me, um, the biggest update, a couple of weeks ago, I had a uh, week-long uh, bridge refresher inspection training down in Lincoln. Um, there's a new federal inspection, they call it S N B. is what they call it, that you have to, way to go out and inspect bridges. This is element inspection-based, Scotts Wolf County has never done element inspection on their bridges. They've always just uh, categorized them pretty much from one to nine. And each one gets a rating, your deck gets a rating, your substructure gets a rating and your superstructure gets a rating. Now, all this is broke down into different elements, each element of the superstructure gets a rating, each element of the substructure gets a rating. So by doing this, uh, the inspections, now talking to a few people here that have started theirs, the inspections used to take us maybe thirty minutes. We would take our, what they call their S I N. A. sheet out, has all the notes from past inspections, the last ratings, and we would go through and take any additional photos that may not be in the records. You know, we could do that probably in about thirty minutes. Now it's taken up to an hour and a half to do one bridge, depending on the size of the bridge. Uh, we have to measure cross-sections on each bridge now, uh, that's something we never did except on our river bridges. So, um, the month of November is when we begin that, so, uh, you may not see me. Um, it's gonna be, it's all come from Federal Highway, uh, the state oversees us with our bridges, so it's just something that we have to, we'll have to do, so. And that's about it.
Well, you had one other item you and I discussed, you said that they pretty well guarantee you were gonna lose one point on ratings.
Yeah, so say we have a bridge rating, say, you know, seven is a pretty, pretty good bridge. Uh, they're saying by this ratings, uh, each bridge will probably lose a rating. So we have quite a few, I'm gonna call them questionable bridges out there, that, some of those could lose, you know, one or two ratings and uh, we may end up closing more than when we're done than what we'd like to see when this is over, so. Um, cause all it takes is one element, you have, if you find one piling in a, in your piling that's over a certain amount and they give you specifications on their descriptions, if something is over six inches long and thi- this much corrosion, a ha- uh, you know, ten percent corrosion, then you have to give it a, what they call like a C S. Three rating, which is poor. So that puts your whole superstructure, just because it's one piling or your whole substructure, in a poor condition, which is gonna probably break that bridge to be closed. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be pretty tough on us, I think, so.
And that's.
That's gonna hurt a lot of counties and it's gonna take a lot of time to, to get into this.
And that's all decided by people who've probably never been under a bridge, that's probably.
It all comes from Federal Highway, so Ashdod and Federal Highway, this, they're the ones that implement all this, the state has to do the same thing now. So they do it and of course, we have to answer to all them, so.
That, and what he's telling you guys right now is just the good news from the federal. The good news from the state, according to N A. Co.'s last meeting, is that they're gonna do away with our bridge match funding.
So that sun sets in twenty-six again, so, uh, I have a, you guys probably got it in your email, I think, from N A. Co. about a, uh, putting out a public notice, uh, asking people, the citizens, to get ahold of their legislators and that to help uh, support the bridge match program. So I was working on a kind of a, a press release and it, uh, Mark has to sign it that you can put out there, asking people to uh, get ahold of the legislators and that. So, uh, I think they're looking for more support than just county boards. Uh, I was also gonna see if I could get something maybe from a couple of cities for that to see if they wouldn't help support.
I think that'd be great.
Some of the bridge match thing too with that, to keep that going.
These are the same folks, several years ago, I put out a notice to all the counties that you had to have to do bridge inspections, you needed the specialized equipment. So therefore, we had to hire.
Engineers.
To do it.
Yeah.
So I asked one of the engineers, I said, who did the inspection, I said, what is, what, what is the, the special equipment that you have that maybe either we could buy or whatever, he says, a pair of breast waders and a flashlight. We could probably get the.
Honest to goodness, that was the answer.
I thought it was gonna be something called, kid like an ice pack.
Well, I thought it was something, something that measured or, you know, so I don't have any idea, and I asked, it, it was a serious question, it was something we could buy ourselves rather than paying, I don't remember what the money was, but it went to one of our local engineering companies, it was a lot of money.
Right.
And he said it was a flashlight and a pair of breast, breast waders.
Right, oh, yeah, they, that's, the basics are just, you know, scraper and hammer and.
Exactly.
Uh, you go to it, they have some technical, you know, they have uh, magnum meters and stuff that do calculations on decks that'll tell you if there's anything. We don't have any of that, you have to have an engineering firm, I'm not sure even like M C. Shaft has that stuff, I think you probably gotta get somebody from back east.
They, they had the breast waders and the flashlight, cause that's what we hired to do it.
Yeah, and you can do all sorts of dye treatment and all that stuff.
But that was back when Senator Harms was, was there, we finally got after him and he got it kind of taken care of so we could do our own.
Yeah.
Get our, get our guys certified to do bridge inspections so we weren't paying somebody else.
So.
But it, it was a farce, absolute farce when we found out about it.
Well, I'm just thinking that if we um, need to send a direct letter to um, Senator Harden, we could from Commissioners and/or ask him to come here if um, if we're ready and prepared to let him know.
I think we need to move to the governor, I think it, we need to get a letter to the governor, but I, I think Steve Wright, I think we ought to get all the communities on board and, and, you know, get city council people and, and uh, and, you know, and maybe so, even like shafts and, and uh, some of the engineers around here, cause I mean, those guys, you know, they, they kind of have, that's a little their bread and butter too, you know?
Well, I don't know if they like it, because that gets more for them.
They love bridge match, ri- if you take away bridge match, we're not gonna be doing bridge.
Oh, the match part, alright, but I'm talking about the inspection part.
Right, the, uh, right. No, the bridge.
They like the inspection part.
The bridge match has been pretty good to Scotts Wolf County, we've been picked eight out of nine times.
Yeah.
Uh, the only time that I can find that we haven't been picked, we haven't submitted, we didn't submit one. So, I think I'm, when I was writing my deal, you know, Scotts Wolf County's received, I think, over one point one million dollars for, in bridge match since it started, so.
But you, you are right, Mark, a lot of times if you go directly to the governor's office, they can get so much more done than.
I think that's where we need to send it right in.
Well, we could go both.
Yeah, fiddling around with.
Right.
But I, I think we ought to get something together, type up something and, and some sort of a signature thing where we can get, you know, cities or counties and everybody to support it, or at least listen to learn what, learn about it so they know what it is, because you take it away, or they pay for two-thirds of the bridges.
Fifty-five percent of a structure, yeah, up to fifty-five percent.
Fifty-five percent of the bridges that we rebuild.
Depending on the structure, so.
You got, you got one group that's saying your bridge is, we're gonna close it because it doesn't meet this six-inch requirement, whatever it is, and another group's saying, well, we're gonna take your money away.
Yeah, then the other one says, we're gonna take your money away, and, and so, I mean, that really, uh, stuff to run a county like that on the budget that we, we're.
It's non-productive, it's absolutely non-productive.
Right, no, so, um, that's all I had, I think, so.
Appreciate it. Jake, have anything?
Back to what Steve said about the R and B. program, I've worked with Charlotte a little bit as far as the work are, we used to use it too, we've had problems with it, Charlotte's helping to get some new stuff going with it. Also on the um, the window project, grant project, we're down, we got one window to go in D M. V., which will be done the thirteenth, they didn't wanna have any interruption. So we're gonna do it on the day we're closed, I'm gonna come down and let them in and make sure they get, get that window put in, and then Lisa and I can work on getting the information sent back to the uh, federal government if they ever open back up.
Who's, who's doing the work, Jake, on the windows?
Thompson Glass, they were the only ones that bid it.
Okay.
And then we can get that grant refunded, I mean, uh, reimbursed. And then the courthouse, the boiler should be, well, I called him today, they're waiting on a pump and a air separator. And once that all gets in, then they'll be starting on that, which I told them they better hurry, it's getting chilly, so. We can actually run the boiler, we've got, we did some repairs on it over the summer a little bit, so we could actually run it to, hopefully if it does get cold, so we can do something with it.
Two years ago, we approved a window at the county court over there, where is that at? The, last time I was over, that hasn't been done.
There's, was never any money, you took the money away.
We, we took the money away?
Yeah, I think so, cause I don't think we did.
I don't think so.
Well, I, I don't remember ever going for it, but we talked about it.
No, we approved it, we approved that, you gave us a bid to fix that, pardon?
I, well, you'd have to tell me when we put up, well, cause we have, we're, we're going for another grant for it right now through Nirma.
You talked about the window in the, in the uh.
County court?
Or the clerk's office?
We did Darles, Darles is.
Darles is done, not Darles.
That was the only one.
You're talking about a separating window.
It's just a separating window, it's just.
Not an exterior one.
That's, we're working on that right now with Nirma, because we put in for Nirma money, they didn't give us that money, so.
I don't think it's that big of a deal to have Thompson come in and put a glass in that, is it?
Other than just the money, probably about ten grand.
Well, I would, I, I thought, I thought we had bids on it, I thought you went out to for bids on that.
We're working on it, we're working on it.
No, he never went out.
We never did on that one.
Okay, well, I'd like to just do that.
We're working on it, yeah, so.
Well, that's what he just said, we, we're, money is not there, we got other projects to do. And that he did file for a Nirma grant, which be, they might give five to eight thousand if it's approved, right?
Yeah, and it, it, we can get one side done for four grand and the other side done for three thousand, so to do them both, it's like, we're looking around ten, so.
You're talking about at the clerk?
County court.
County court.
County court. There's two windows.
Okay, right, that's a goofy area there, how that, way that's a long, long, strung-out thing, I understand.
It's all uh, ceiling tile, so there's no structure up above to really hold it, so. We're, I mean, it's, we're working on it, so, trying to put something together.
Okay, cause I, I.
Greg Thompson's working on that with us.
As far as I know, they are assuming that it's gonna get done, they're assuming.
Well, I, every time I talk to them, the girls about it, they have, want nothing to do with it. The, the people that work there, but I give it evidently the uh, supervisors are the ones that want it, so.
Yeah, where did this even come from?
Uh?
I, where did it even come from, I guess?
Well, when we start, we originally put in the windows, the, the glass, the plexiglass that we built for them during COVID. So that's kind of where it started.
That could be.
I think that's when the supervisors kind of liked it and then they saw what we have over here to separate it. And I think they probably do at times in county court, get some confrontation. I think that's when the supervisors kinda liked it, and then they saw what we have over here to separate it, and I think they probably do at times, in county court, get some confrontational people when they wanna go with separation.
Once you got done in district court, I think they like really well, and I think a lot of that's kinda, you know, trickling down, but I'd like to see us get something, at least get some quotes in here, so we kinda know what the dollars are gonna be.
I've got quotes for them, like I said, about forty-eight hundred for one and about thirty-eight hundred for the other.
Hey, you said you didn't have quotes.
I did for NERMA, so I could see about, I have to get quotes for NERMA.
Can you present them to this board?
To see how it costs, I can bring them, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to see them.
No problem.
All right, thanks. Ms. Kina, if you have anything?
I do not.
Ken?
Uh, all my meetings are this week. Uh, I'll go to the, I'll try to get to the, uh, tourism meeting on Wednesday, I believe, Wednesday afternoon, I think.
Are you going to that too, Mark, or just one of you guys?
Both of us normally.
Both, that's what I thought, you still were.
Yeah, it's on my list.
How long are we gonna continue with two board members going to a tourism meeting?
Well, um, I think now that we know, um, the status of Charlie not being here, that we can talk about that, um, virtually at any time as to, um, filling that, the other thing is that when we do get a, a new person in the, in the other chair, um, you know, what positions are they gonna fill? And are they gonna be part of everything Charlie was, or how are we gonna fill those, and we're gonna need to talk about that, I think.
I think we need to let them fill what, what was filled, to get us to the end of the year, we've got, what, three months, four months here, and we'll be done with all.
So what, what is your issue with two going to a meeting?
I don't have any issue, I just think it's a little redundant, don't you?
I think it.
Not necessarily, I'm, I'm still the, I'm still the.
Of course, I, one, I think one of you guys can handle that job, you know?
Well, we can, but.
It's not, it's not, it's not that we're handling the job, it's just, I, I, I enjoy going to the meetings, I enjoy their, listening to what they have to say, yeah.
That's what I said, keep going, but I think he could drop off and you could keep running along the road.
And, there's been a few of them recently where I couldn't go to, but, right. But from a legal standpoint, the two being there is not, not a, not a legal issue.
It's not an issue, if you have the time.
Right, but, uh, yeah, sometimes if, if I'm, if I'm specifically not gonna be there, I try and let Ken know, and if he's specifically not gonna be there, I think he tries to let me know, and or Brenda, that, um, that we're not gonna be there. So I always like it if we have at least one, and two's okay, but, um, at least one is.
No, I was just asking, I'm not telling you, I'm just.
All right, anything else, Ken?
No.
Okay, so, um, so we have been meeting for, uh, three weeks, four weeks on the State of the Valley, um, presentations, and, um, there's been some, uh, movement towards that being, uh, slightly different than what it has been in the past. There's been some suggestions that we, we make it a little bit different, but, um, the, so we're gonna participate as, um, basically as needed, uh, I would su- suspect that our portion's gonna be maybe a little bit less than what it has been, but, um, I, I think it's gonna be fine, and, um, gonna have a, kind of a moderator of the, um, of that meeting at, at this point, so. Um, not all the details are ironed out yet, but, um, we only have a couple weeks left, and the, um, what date is that, at least, the twenty?
Second.
Twenty-second, yeah.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, so, it's at eleven-thirty, I believe, on that date, so.
They're gonna be at it.
The Hampton Inn.
Hampton Inn.
Hampton Inn.
Yeah.
And you need to reserve ahead of time if you're interested.
Right, so, and I think the reservations go to the chamber, I believe, so.
Right.
Anyway, so we're working on that, um, the, so as I was looking at the calendar, um, so, uh, the thirteenth, we're closed, uh, here at the courthouse for Columbus Day, and that's been a little bone of contention with some people recently that I've talked with as far as Indigenous People Day versus Columbus Day, and I think we're calling it Columbus Day here, is, uh, what we call it, so. Um, the twentieth is our next commissioner meeting, and, um, we need to have a jail tour on that, so, uh, Troy, if you can be sure that you and or the sheriff is aware of that, and, um, Kelly, um, is aware of that, but anyway, we need to have the jail tour on the agenda for that. Um, I also noticed that Robert had asked about, um, uh, is it the twenty-seventh, I think, of this month, to have a.
Yeah.
Um, assessor, oh, I, I'm calling it a post protest, um, discussion, um, and so that, of course, would be that next Monday, and he's asking for that to be at four-thirty.
Was it four-three or was it earlier?
I was thinking four-thirty, we can double check that.
I think it was earlier.
I think it was three or three-thirty.
Actually, I thought it was like two-thirty.
Yeah, I think it was two-thirty.
Let me look on my.
It was, it was a bit earlier.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, we asked to have a post, um, protest meeting, uh, we had one kinda last year, but it was six months, eight months later.
Two-thirty is what he's asking on the twenty-seventh.
Two-thirty?
Yeah.
I wrote it down, it was four-thirty.
It was two-thirty to four-thirty, so.
Okay. Um, we also have a personnel meeting coming up, I think, on the thirtieth of this month. And, um, that I'm part of, and, uh, I wanted to remind everybody that, um, I think Kina sent out an email concerning the employee appreciation lunch, and that's on December third.
That's correct.
At eleven-thirty, I believe.
Correct.
So, um, we need to try and check your calendars for that, and, um, uh, let her know we need to make reservations, so. Um, I have a couple other of my, um, normal meetings, uh, I think this, this week, I think it's Panhandle Public Health, um, I don't have that scheduled in front of me, but anyway, those are some of the meetings I have.
I'm gonna ask you a question, uh, I don't know if it's a month, two months now, you had a, uh, Heartland Express meeting, and I was just wondering, if there's anything new on that, I, I never got the chance to talk to you about that.
No, but there will be now, because they just had, uh, the, um, big regional meeting in Lubbock, Texas, and, um, so, um, I have not heard what exactly, um, was discussed there yet, but, um, uh, we'll be updated on that from Deb Cotier, um, she normally goes.
Did they report on any of the properties being sold out here on the highway or anything on?
No, I, I don't know the progress there, I do, I have talked to some out there that said that they've already closed, uh, and, you know, they offered them money, and then I have others that say they haven't even started negotiating with me.
I was gonna say, that's what I've talked to people, that said they haven't even talked to them.
So I, I don't know where they're at exactly.
Okay, I just didn't know if you knew any more than what I'd kinda heard.
Not right now.
Okay.
Okay, so that's all I have, Mike?
I had a emergency management advisory board meeting this morning at Lyman Fire Department, and then tomorrow I have a Panhandle Emergency Management Training Meeting in Bridgeport. I also have a County Housing Board meeting tomorrow, so I had to prioritize, so I picked the, uh, Emergency Management Meeting instead, so that's my week.
What was that one? What was that last one, you have a county health?
No, Panha- uh, Panhandle Emergency Management.
Yeah, and then you said you had another one.
Uh, County Housing.
Housing, housing.
Housing Authority.
They always let me know the day before, so it's pretty hard to.
You, they don't have, they don't have them projected out a month at a time?
They try to, but then the time they get notices out there, but it's a lot of times it's the day before or the day after.
That's no way you're gonna do this, they're, they're supposed to be out there forty-eight hours anyway, that's not right, something needs to be corrected there.
Well, that's not a big issue, except that, you know, I check my emails at like nine o'clock in the morning, if I get them after that, I won't see it till the next day unless I happen to look again.
Russ?
Well, we, we had NACO last week, that was right.
Yeah.
And met with several people, talked about the, uh, the, the new, I guess, uh, possibility of a new, uh, juvenile detention center, some cha- you know, some things on that. Um, then I had a Sears House meeting Thursday, and then, uh, I have Capwin meeting tomorrow. And so all my stuff's kinda down the rest of the month, this is early for me on the month, so. Nothing's really changing on any of the other boards.
I'm glad you mentioned the juvenile detention, because that's been a, as you said, a topic of discussion at our, um, NACO, um, quarterly meetings, and so that's been coming up some, and, uh, the sheriff, uh, was there, and he gave a real good report.
He did.
What the state has been doing, and as far as, um, any, any contact that he's had with them, and, um, so it could certainly be that, um, there's some things maybe gonna develop there, I, it's slow coming.
I think it will, I think it will, I mean, there was some real interest for a change.
Right, Commissioner Leece, uh, from Banner County, was kinda asked to keep that in motion.
He's got lead on that right now.
So, he's doing that. Okay, uh, I think that includes all the board and staff. All right, so the next item is our executive session, uh, for the purpose of a personnel matter. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion, and then we'll let Mr. Jason explain anything that he thinks he needs to concerning your question about a Mitch. But, um, my motion, um, I move pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the reissue of the revised statutes known as the Nebraska Public Meetings Law, that the board hold a closed session with Jason Ocean, Lisa Rhine, and the board for the purpose of discussion of job performance of a person. I further move that this closed session is clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputa- reputation of individuals, and that person has not requested a public meeting, and that sessions with respect to personnel matters and job performance are authorized by the Nebraska Public Meetings Law. So that's my motion, is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, before we vote, is there anything else that you wanna say, uh, Jason, uh, just based upon Mitch's,
Sure.
uh, comment of, I think he said he's objecting to the executive session.
No, and I appreciate the, the comment, um, so in, in Nebraska, if an executive session at a public meeting is known ahead of the meeting, uh, I think this is the question, um, whether or not something should be, you know, put on the notice ahead of time. Um, I believe it should be, um, the Nebraska Open Meetings Act requires that an agenda be made available with sufficient descriptive items to give the public reasonable, uh, notice as to the mattered, matters to be considered, and this, this would include, um, executive session, closed session topics if known ahead of time. Uh, I know it, it's some past meetings, and, and I think these are reasonable questions to ask. Um, it's been asked about whether it's improper to, to put it on the agenda, uh, ahead of time. Um, you know, there's a couple of statutes on this particular, uh, executive session, one of them is, um, eighty-four dash fourteen-eleven, and that talks about, you know, how, how much in advance you need to have the, uh, the agenda published, and then section E of that statute talks about to give the public reasonable advance notice of the matters to be considered, and then sets out some exceptions, um, one of the exceptions is not an executive session, so if you know about it ahead of time, I think it should be published, uh, in the agenda, so that the public does know what, what is gonna be the topic of a closed session, so that a citizen, I think just like in this example, could object. And, and we've had some examples at past meetings where it, it came up with Commissioner Knapper as to whether or not, um, there could be a closed session in pursuant to the statute, the, uh, person subject to the closed session indicated, well, I don't want it to be closed, I want it to be public, in which case the exception that's set out in eighty-four fourteen-ten goes away, and we'll have it on the, in the public session. Here, the issue is, is that an evaluation of job performance issue has come up, um, in my opinion, if, if that's discussed publicly at this stage, that that could cause, uh, unnecessary or needless injury to that person's reputation. That person was informed, um, of the issue, and that, um, they had a right to have this in public session, since it was known ahead of time. Uh, that person indicated that they did not request a public session, um, so to me, the, we would have to read these two state statutes in conjunction, we've got the eighty-four fourteen-eleven statutes about providing, uh, notice to the public, um, uh, so that they would know ahead of time the general topic to be discussed. State statute says even with the transparency laws, that at this stage, we do not need to name the person because of the possible harm to their reputation, um, and it falls under the exception of eighty-four dash fourteen-ten that, uh, Commissioner Harris read, specifically subsection D, that says that the board can consider in closed session the evaluation of the job performance of a person when necessary to prevent needless injury to the reputation of a person, and if such person has not requested, uh, a public meeting. As I understand it, I think that there have been times, and I think reasonably so, that if it's on the agenda, has the, have the commissioners essentially already talked about it in some inappropriate way, and I think that's a reasonable question to ask, but here, the idea is, is that we had an issue come up, I was informed about it, I suggested in this case, uh, a closed session, so that all four of you could be informed of it, because I don't believe that is, that has happened to date, um, and even though it is to be closed, I, I felt that in any time that we know about it ahead of time, that it makes sense to publish it pursuant to the agenda in notice section of state statutes, and to give a citizen an opportunity to object, and for even somebody subject to the personnel matter to show up at a meeting and say, no, I've changed my mind, I want it to be public now, and, um, so in any event, those are the two statutes that I, um, that I believe come into play, and even with those, uh, I believe that, um, a proper reading of the statutes shows that, um, we should put it on the agenda ahead of time if we know about it, that we explain the basis under state statute for the closed session. We give anybody that is gonna be the subject of a session, if we know about it ahead of time, and they're an employee, an opportunity to say, I want it public, and within the transparency section, still give the public enough notice about what the topic is, so that they could show up and object to say, no, I've read that statute, and that's not one of the exceptions that's listed, so.
Okay, Jason, isn't, isn't that kind of contrary i- in the fact that the reason for the executive session, as Mark just read, uh, I don't remember the exact wordage, about protection of the employee, or protection of the, of, of the person that you're going to executive session for? Now, if I remember right, at a couple of meetings, three, four meetings ago, it was, it was listed that we're going to go into executive session to discuss the future employment, or the status of the employment of, of not the, it, it didn't say the person's name, but it gave their, it gave that individual's position. How, how did we protect that, that, that individual by doing it that way? When, when we say we're gonna notify the, the public about what it is, we're not protecting the employee, when, when we do it, if, if I heard right, what, what, uh, what you were saying.
Well, I think in that, I think the notice that Kelly put on the. Well, I think in that, I think the notice that Kelly put on the agenda, I don't, I don't believe gave the, um, so there were two agenda items for that meeting. One of them was, um, a, a similar description about a personnel matter, but it did not list that person's name nor their title. I think where that became conflated at the meeting is there was a later agenda item that did say that, that there was gonna be some discussion about that.
About the position.
About that position. That was not the executive session line of the agenda.
So what, what, what would, what should we do different? Cause I'm the one who called or sent the text, I believe, or email to Kelly to have this put on the agenda. Is there something that more, that needs to be added to this that we don't have on here now?
No, I don't believe so. As I understand the, the concern that's been raised, and I think it's a reasonable one, is whether or not an execu- and I could be wrong about the concern, but.
You either have one that's complaining or has a complaint about it, right? You said you were gonna obje- object to it?
Yeah, so I, as I understand the, the. As I understand the concern, but certainly the person objecting can, can elaborate on it, is whether or not we should be putting known executive session items ahead of time on the agenda. Um, and my opinion is, is that we, we should do that.
Are you, are you under, also is under your opinion that we're doing according to statute?
Yes, both, both because of the notice provision and what the exceptions are when we don't have to put something on the notice. And specifically for this reason, that this carve-out is specifically in eighty-four fourteen-ten that would allow a closed session.
And I would only say, and then Mitch, I am gonna allow you to come up here in just a second, and then we're gonna move on with this and we're gonna vote. But, um, whenever we have executive sessions, it almost always triggers with me a phone call to Jason to say, Jason, is this something we can do in an executive session? Do we need to do it in an executive session or do we need to do it in public session? And so it's always a question that's asked. We don't go at it, um, and quite honestly, there's some of these that we say, surely this is one we can do in executive session. And Jason will tell us, no, it isn't.
An open session.
It's, it's not one that you can do in closed session. You've gotta do it in open session. And so we do it in open session. And that happens far more times than the other way. Um, and so, um, uh, but certainly there's executive sessions allowed for in the state statute. But if you wanna come up and say anything else shortly, and then we're gonna vote on this.
Mitch Wagers, M I T C H W A G E R S. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm not sure, to use your words, Jason, I'm not sure where the conflating part came in. Uh, I in no way said anything about why I object when I came up here the first time. So I'm not sure how there is some kind of reason by somebody interjected into the conversation that I wasn't, I guess, a part of, even though I was here.
I don't know, but tell us what you are concerned about.
Well, I, I told you that I was objecting to that executive session, and the reason being, if you would've asked then instead of conflated, why?
I'm asking now. I'm asking now.
Okay, well, just with respect due, you said when you motioned, I think you did it exactly right. When you motioned to go into executive session, I think you did it exactly right.
Right, and as you would, can imagine, I read it right off the sheet that Jason told me to use.
But you did not read it off the agenda, so that is not what the agenda of this meeting says. So, that is my objection. You have the subject, right? You have the subject of what the executive session is for, a personnel matter, but you don't have the reason. So, you reading it is now too late because the public has not had notice about what it actually is other than the subject. That's my objection. And you can dislike it, but I didn't write the law, so.
Right, and so.
Hi, money out with the Star Herald. I've had this discussion with Dave Eubanks quite a few times, that the agenda just lists personnel, and that's not a sufficient descriptor, um, as, according to the statute that Jason read, for the public to be able to know. Yeah, Mark, you know what the executive session is, but I did not know what personnel means. Just a moment, please wait before interrupting me.
Good.
I didn't know what personnel meant. The general public doesn't know what it means. And so we don't know whether or not to show up or if it will be something that we'll be concerned about when it just says personnel. Now, the way that you read it, it does, but it should say on the agen- on the agenda, personnel me- you know, for the discussion of the job performance of a person. And most boards do that. The city of Scotts Bluff does that when they, um, discuss the evaluation for Kevin Spencer. They do it over at Gearing when they discuss the job evaluation of Pat Heath. And then I have the chance to say, okay, so what is you guys' plans? Are you guys gonna go into executive session on this? Is this gonna be good? So that I can object before the meeting if they plan on going to executive session and whether or not they have an allowable reason to go into executive session. So I have quite a few opinions, but I would be glad to forward to Jason that I feel back of my position that yes, I do think that it should be more descriptive on the agenda.
The, the only.
Just a second.
Go ahead.
Ken, ten minutes ago, Ken just asked that, is if there was enough information on his, what he requested this.
On the agenda.
On the agenda, and that's what you're asking about. Cause Ken asked for this to be placed on the agenda. He just asked if he shouldn't have add, made it more descriptive of some sort.
And I don't know who he asked.
I, I didn't ask. I just, I, I made a request and the court's office put it on the agenda.
Right, and so, yeah, and so then it's, it's been, and I, I, like I said, I've had this discussion with Dave Eubanks in the past. I've had this discussion with Kelly Seitz before. I don't think that it's descriptive enough to just put personnel. I have an opinion from, um, when Ed Mayo questioned in front of his own board, where the attorney, um, general did issue an opinion that personnel was not a sufficient descriptor.
So, and, and I'll, I'll bring it up again. The, the reason that we go into executive session is to protect.
Protect.
Is to protect the, the reputation of an individual, the reputation of a department, the reputation of whatever it is that we're going to talk about. So if you're too strict, I lost the word, descriptive.
Right.
On the agenda item, we haven't, we haven't done our job. We have not protected that employee.
Except for the actual discussion is protected because you guys are in executive session.
Say, that we can go on and on about this item all night. I'm gonna give you a chance to come up in just a minute, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, but I would only suggest, from our standpoint up here as the board, when we get ready to think that we have an, an issue that might need to be dealt with in executive session, I think it needs to run through Jason, let him decide what the language is gonna be on the agenda.
I agree.
And, um, then we'll go from there because if he helps put that, um, information on the agenda, he's the one representing us, and we're gonna go with it. And then he can help defend that, okay?
And I'll be honest, I've had these discussions with Ken Hayden felt before, and we have these discussions ideally ahead of the meeting so that we can, you know, kind of have an idea of what is going on.
I, I appreciate your.
I'm interested in some of what you cited regarding transparency law, um, parts, cause nobody's ever cited those to me, so I'm interested in that.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm having a discussion.
I'm asking you, right, good enough, but you can.
This, this agenda was published on Friday.
Right.
And if both of you don't feel it was descriptive enough, somebody should've called the chairman of the board.
Well, I.
On Friday, on Friday.
I noted, I've had this discussion with a past attorney. I've had this discussion with a clerk. I've not gotten anywhere. It's on the agenda again. I haven't, um, covered a meeting of recent date where you guys have not had it sufficiently described until tonight's meeting, and tonight this personnel.
I think in simple terms, our intention is to provide whatever we need to provide on the agenda as required by law.
At a bare minimum.
And we're looking to Mr. Jason to tell us what that is. We appreciate your opinions, but we're looking to him. He's the guy that's looking out for us and trying to protect us. And if he says that this information is the way he believes it needs to be done, then in my opinion, that's what we're going with, and he'll help defend that later on if we need to.
So the one thing I will say with this is that, uh, I wasn't part of how the agenda was written up this time. I didn't, I didn't get a thing about it ahead of time. Uh, and with Mr. Wagers, I, I apologize. We, we discussed an issue in the past about the objection with certain things being published ahead of time, and I improperly assumed that that was the point of discussion tonight. So I just wanted to clarify.
Sorry. Ma'am, come on up.
Robin Kinney, my last name is spelled K I N N E Y, and I think, and I might be putting words in Mitch's mouth, but I think the broader question is there have been several agenda items that have been intentionally vague that we didn't know as members of the public, even published on Friday, that this is the item we're going to talk about. And I spoke about it another time. Um, most recently, when it was on the agenda to approve the purchase of the tracking software, that was not how it was presented on the agenda. It was very vague. It was kind of unint- I don't know if it was intentional or not. But at the next meeting, I got snark about somebody in the room doesn't think our agenda item was specific enough last week.
Okay, so let me just.
I think the, the broader question that it begs is, I think you should maybe, and this is my opinion, err on the side of caution if you're gonna put it on the agenda. You know, definitely protect your personnel. You don't want that out there. I understand that. But executive session for the purpose of a personnel matter is very vague. If it's, if it's to discuss.
Your opinion. I'm gonna go with his, and I'm gonna, in the future, we may try and strive to be better.
Well, I'm hoping you do because you're not coming across as very transparent.
Well.
Let me ask you a question. How would you, how would you expect us to be more specific for you and less specific for the person we're protecting?
Executive session for the purpose of a personnel matter to discuss job performance of an employee.
No problem. Uh, if that helps you, I don't see how it does, but if it helps you, that's great.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Thank you.
But in any event, our direction's gonna be advised from Mr. Jason. That's the way I see it. He's the guy we hired to do it, and ultimately, um, if it, if that's not sufficient enough, what he does, and I think we just need to be sure that if we're putting something, especially executive session, on the agenda, we need to be sure that it goes through Jason, and he needs to approve the language when we do it. Mitch, you got about two minutes up here, and that's it, and we're gonna vote.
I don't need two minutes.
All right.
Mitch Wagers, M I T C H W A G E R S. So, thank you, Robin. The bigger picture here is that I cannot hold Jason Ocean accountable for anything that he does in representation of the county. I can't.
Well, you can.
He's not an elected official, and under the law, Mr. Eubanks is the one supposed to be sitting here taking care of that and guiding the commissioners. So I can't hold Jason Ocean, no offense to him, but I can't hold him accountable for any of his actions. I can hold our county attorney accountable for his actions. So you're, you're, in my opinion, you're bypassing something by, by even having him as your guidance because I have no way to keep him accountable, and neither does anybody else in the public.
But he's keeping our, us accountable and keeping us away from a lawsuit because we're, we're out right now.
All right, I appreciate what you're saying and.
I don't appreciate the back and forth with that, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second to go into executive session for the motion that was written. Call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Lou.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Rising.
Yes.
We're going to executive session and back in the conference room back here, and then we'll be back here when we're finished. Let the record show, it is six fourteen.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it, buddy.
The minute I step up there, the snark just.
I know, I was just saying.
Oh, wait, I'm a woman. That's it, yeah. I am a woman, and how dare I speak against him?
They're snarking at me in that, that.
Yeah, yeah.
There's other things going on.
The general public, I mean, that's your job.
This, this goes right back to the purchase of the tracking software. I said they should not be voting on it that night because we had taken, I was not.
I'll give you my water back. I didn't even open it.
Okay.
Have it.
I'll take it.
Yep, you can drink it yourself if you like.
Am I, should I?
I haven't took anything with me.
Right?
Yes.
Meeting will come back to order at seven twenty-six, um, from executive session. And, uh, I would only report that, um, the, uh, we were, um, giving, given information and have, uh, an informative session for the commissioners. Um, no, um, decisions were made and no votes were taken. Um, and, um, then now we're back. Uh, any other things that need to be said from anyone else? All right, so that's the last item on the agenda.
Do you want me to take roll call?
Oh, yes, all right.
Harris?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Rising?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Okay.
Meeting's adjourned.
And I've got seven twenty-eight.
Okay, and this is, uh, stuff for Phil Maven. I already signed it, actually. I thought, well, he was gone, but I think we'll give it to him. I thought it was gonna come out.
Joe and Ernie was right across from you, so we, we were all three together. I'm right next to your vehicle right now.
What's that?
I was just right next to his vehicle. He's, what's he from? Dremble, that's.
Ah, from church, yeah.
I told him to get some for me, and I met with Harden on Friday or Saturday, and I forgot to come to you.
Yeah, it was Dremble Saturday.
Sounds kinda good, Howard.
First Saturday of the month.
Did you turn this off? Did you turn it on? It's not going. I just wondered. I'm seeing they're messing with it and it's.
Bill might've, cause I told him that I didn't need it. He was messing with it before you got here.
Who's a member? I don't know. I don't know. I would certainly say since.
This, this is someone a member, you're saying, or, you know, our membership is.
Yes. I actually remember today, but it was not coming through my brain.
But the Sunday morning services. You know, I go to the first one. I don't see what happens in the second. The second's always good. Yeah, and, um, the first one is normally less than a hundred, probably eighty, sixty to eighty on the ticket. The second one I would suspect is a hundred and forty, a hundred and.